We are now live, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Town Clerk. Good afternoon. I'm Councilor Anne Johnson, Mayor of Tavistock Town Council. I will now ask members present to indicate by physical show of hands that they can hear proceedings. Please, if you can hear me, please raise your hand. Thank you. I don't think we have any joining by order link, Town Clerk, do we? No, thank you. We will now take a roll call of councillors present. Mrs Smallorum, can you please take the roll call?
Yes. councillor Crawford.
Yes.
Councillor Ellis. Councillor Mrs Ewing.
Present.
Councillor Fay. Councillor Lewis. I don't think we have councillor Mann yet. Councillor Moody. Councillor Mrs Parker.
Present.
Mr Parker.
Present.
Councillor Barry Smith.
Present.
Councillor Harry Smith.
Here.
Councillor Squire.
Here.
Councillor Venning.
Here.
Councillor Ward.
Yes, I'm here.
And councillor Williamson.
Thank you.
And I'm here, Madam Mayor, as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do apologise, councillor Hutton, it's because you're at the top with the mayor. Apologise.
Thank you. Councillors and officers are asked to ensure they have included their name against their thumbnail video so they can be clearly identified by viewers. May I take this opportunity to remind councillors that, subject to certain conditions, standing orders provide for speaking once on each item on the agenda. Members who wish to speak are asked to please raise your hand. If that doesn't work, please send a message to the Town Clerk. The quorum for council is six. May I remind councillors and the public that the documents for this meeting are available on the council website. Please note that members are asked not to use the shared documents facility in this meeting. In addition, may I remind you all to stay muted until called to speak and to re-mute once you have spoken. When I call you to speak, I will state your name. In the interest of transparency, try not to use the comments facility to communicate during the meeting other than with myself in the open forum. In no circumstances should it be used for private discussions. Voting will either be a set of the member or by roll call vote. For a roll call, members are asked to state either for, against or abstain when asked. If a councillor declares an interest, they will be temporarily removed from the meeting until the matter has been resolved and then readmitted. When the public part of the meeting concludes, there will be a brief adjournment for 10 minutes to enable councillors to log back in for the confidential part of proceedings. Thank you. Right, we'll start the meeting proper now. Item one, apologies. Do you have any apologies, Town Clerk?
None received, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item two, declarations of interest. To receive disclosures of unregistered other interests from councillors on matters to be considered at the meeting. The disclosure shall include the nature of the interest. If a member becomes aware during the course of a meeting of an interest that has not been disclosed under this item, they must immediately disclose it. Under the code of conduct, councillors with an interest, whether or not it is a disclosable pecuniary interest or other interest, must leave the room for the duration of consideration of the item to which the interest relates. Item three, minutes of council meeting. To confirm the minutes of the meeting of Tavistock Town Council held on the 26th of January, which are enclosed with your papers.
Move the minutes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Can we have a second for those, please? Councillor Ellis, thank you. Any amendments? Out for debate? No. Right, can we have a show of hands, please? Those in favour, please show. Okay, that's all missed, everybody. Thank you. Item B, matters arising. Are there any matters arising from those minutes? Councillor Williamson, please.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I must apologise to the council. Item 229, I undertook to report about the Oak Rail Forum. Due to work commitments and technical difficulties, I was unable to attend that meeting. I'll have to follow up in due course and let council know. So again, my apologies about that.
Thank you, councillor Williamson. Any other matters arising, please? No, we move on then. Item four, public representations and questions. To receive any written representations or previously submitted questions from members of the public in attendance. Do we have any, Town Clerk?
None received.
Thank you. Items requiring a decision. Item five, Budget and Policy Committee. To consider the minutes of the meeting of the Budget and Policy Committee held on Tuesday, the 23rd of February, 2021. Councillor Hutton, Deputy Mayor, please.
Good evening, everybody. I'm rising to present these meetings. Minutes, I shall go through them by number until the recommendations. Minute 243, apologies for absence. Minute 244, confirmation minutes. Minute 245, declaration of interest. Minute 246, Sustainability and Environment Working Group. And there is a recommendation here. There is a recommendation that Tavistock Town Council endorse the recommendation included in the foregoing report of the working group to which note number four refers. I am happy to propose that recommendation.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that recommendation, please? Councillor Mrs Mann?
Yeah, well, I will second that, but I just wanted to clarify, it says the blue plaque scheme under the recommendation. I don't know if that's actually part of the recommendation, but it's actually the blue heart scheme.
Okay, thank you. That's an amendment to those minutes. Thank you for that, councillor Mann. So you're happily seconded that recommendation. Out for debate? Any questions, comments on it? No. Okay, so we have a recommendation that's been proposed and seconded. Can we vote then, please? Those in favour, please show. Thank you very much. Okay, Town Clerk? Yeah. Continue, please. Deputy Mayor.
247, Tavistock Townscape Heritage Initiative. Minute 248, virtual meetings and coronavirus. Minute 249, coronavirus lockdown. And 250, informal policy meeting. There are some other minutes in the confidential section, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
Right, thank you very much for those. Thank you. We now move on to general finance, little A, schedule of payments to consider and endorse the monthly accounts. The schedule is available on the website. Were there any comments or questions on that schedule? Will look fairly straightforward from what I could see. Can we note that schedule, please? Thank you. Anybody have any questions? No. Okay, move on now to little B, budget monitoring report to consider and endorse the budget monitoring report to the 31st of January, which is enclosed with your papers. Any comments or questions? Can we note those, please? Thank you. Happy to note those, yeah. Right, we now move on to item seven, Development Management and Licensing Committee. To receive and consider the minutes of the meeting of the DMNL Committee held on 16th of February. Councillor Ward, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Minutes of the Development Management and Licensing Committee, 16th of February. 234, apologies for absence. 235, confirmation of minutes. 236, declarations of interest. 237, Dartmoor National Park Authority. 238, town planning issues. 239, general correspondence. 240, urgent business brought forward. 241A, planning decisions. 241B, new planning applications. And there is the recommendation that the views of the town council, as listed in Appendix B, be passed to the local planning authority for consideration.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that recommendation, please? Councillor Venning, thank you very much. I don't think there's might be some things to debate. Any comments or questions? Can we vote then? Those in favour, please show. Thank you. Councillor Ward, continue, please.
Thank you very much. 242, next meeting. Minutes of the DMNL Committee for the 8th of March, yesterday. 258, apologies for absence. 259, confirmation of minutes. 260, declarations of interest. 261A, Dartmoor Local Plan Examination. 262, town planning issues. 263, general correspondence. 264, urgent business brought forward. 265A, planning decisions. 265B, new planning applications. And I draw members' attention to little two, Roman numerals two, planning application 4257/20/OPA. And there is a recommendation here. And we bring this forward because this concerns a development of 10 properties. And we had previously agreed that developments of 10 or more properties would come to full council for ratification. It is recommended that Tavistock Town Council object to the application on the following basis. The site is an unsustainable location with no public transport available. There will therefore be a reliance on the use of private cars. B, this is unjustified development in the countryside. C, there appears to be the potential for significant harm to a nearby monument, brackets, the Trendle, close brackets.
Thank you. So we've got a recommendation for a larger planning application. I think it was that line of application.
Yes.
Which councillor Ward has detailed. Can I have a second for that, please? Councillor Hutton, thank you very much. It's out for debate now. This is something that the council, this is your opportunity to say anything if you have different view or if you support this view. But this is your opportunity to say what you think. Anybody wish to comment? Councillor Mrs Mann?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I agree with the view that was put forward in the recommendation. And I just wanted to add to that, that I don't think that there is significant pedestrian access, which I'm not sure. I mean, it does say that there's only transport by car, but I think if we look along the road, there's really very little pedestrian access from that location. And I think we should sort of note that separately. And that, I think it's mentioned that the adjacent cycle route is is close by, but it's actually up on the viaduct. And so there's not really a way to get to that adjacent cycle route from the site that's proposed. So I think there's a need to say that the links that they've made within the application are not actually possible to access with any sort of ease. So they're not supported under the sustainable policies under the joint local plan.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Crawford.
Thank you. We discussed all of those issues that councillor Mann has just brought up because the Transition Travel and Group sent a very comprehensive paper through to us all discussing the lack of footpaths in the area, how you could get down as far as where there is any pavement in Old Exeter Road and about the cycle track. So all of that was taken into consideration. I agree, it might be sensible to add it as kind of a point on the on the recommendation.
Okay. We could add it as an amendment, Town Clerk, couldn't we? It's an addition to the comments we've already got, I think.
I think councillor Mann has already, in effect, moved an amendment in relation to the sustainability issues. So if she's happy with that and there's a second and it's duly moved, that can be incorporated as an amendment. The key thing is that all members are clear on the nature of any amendment that comes forward.
Thank you. Councillor Moody first, and councillor Graham Parker, please, and councillor Ellis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just like to say that I will be not voting on this item tonight, being a West Devon Borough Council ward member for this area where the application is made. So I need to declare an interest and maintain my, the fact that I haven't prejudged the application.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Parker, next, please.
Just, I second councillor Mann's amendment, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Ellis.
Yeah, I was just saying, Madam Mayor, that councillor Crawford said we will receive this report from the transition to Tavistock. I'm disappointed that as far as chairman of the committee, I did not receive this report at all.
Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. Councillor Crawford.
Yes, it was my understanding that it was sent to all councillors. So yeah, I don't know what happened there. Yeah, it should, it should have been, no, councillor Parker shaken his head. No, I don't know whose responsibility that was then. I don't know who it was sent to. It clearly just said councillor, so I assumed that it was sent to all councillors. My apologies if I've overlooked that.
Councillor Parker?
Yeah, I've got the email in front of me. In terms of Tavistock Town councillors, it was sent to Moody Crawford, Johnson, Hutton, Squire, Parker, Graham, Venning and Smith. That was all.
Right, okay, thank you. Councillor Ward, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just think, need to make it clear that this was not a report. This was an email originating from out with this organisation. It was sent to us by Transition Tavistock, the Active Transport Group. And it went to councillors that the sender believed to be on the DMNL Committee. In fact, I didn't receive a copy myself, so councillor Ellis is in good company. And it was thanks to another member of Tavistock Town Council that I got to see it. I have since written to the person who sent us that email and received a reply, making the sender aware of who the members are. So I think if we get any further communication from that source, hopefully at least all the members of the DMNL Committee should receive them.
Thank you, councillor Ward. We have a proposal which has an amendment, so we'll take the amendment first. Seems to have lost everybody off my screen, which isn't very helpful. Councillor Venning, did you wish to speak? So you're on mute, councillor Venning?
Yeah. Going back to what they were saying about the, they keep referring to the cycle track. Now, I believe that the cycle track is supposed to be on the old railway line.
Yes.
Have they taken consideration that we're still trying to get the railway line from Milcampton to Tavistock? So in years to come, there won't be a cycle track up there?
I think we have to deal with things as they are at the moment. I think that's a long-term aim and it's councillor Williamson, are you looking to comment on that?
Good point.
Councillor Williamson, were you looking to comment? I'm not sure if you put your hand up. No, okay. Sorry for the delays. I'm having to go from one screen to the next to make sure there's nobody else looking to speak. Okay, so we have an amendment which has been seconded. So if we can take the amendment first, please. Those in favour of the amendment, please show. Thank you. I think that's everybody. And we have to take the main motion now, Town Clerk, is that correct?
If you'll take the substantive motion, which will be the original motion.
Okay. So now we take the substantive motion, so which has been, has it been seconded? I can second that.
Madam Mayor.
Sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Madam Mayor, but before we do so, I'm afraid I would like to propose another amendment. I would like, I would like to strengthen little C, there appears to be the potential for significant harm to a nearby monument. The said monument is a statutory monument. And there is reason to believe that there may be significant findings underneath the application site. It has never been explored, but it is only 65 metres from the Trendle. And I just, I feel that we just need to give that a little bit, a little bit more emphasis to make it clear that there could be some significant findings there.
Thank you. I'd agree with that. So that's a further amendment to the recommendation which has been seconded. Anybody have any comments or questions to make about that? Right, can we put that second amendment to the vote then, please? Those in favour, please show. Thank you. Councillor Ellis, I can't see, I don't, I don't know which hand you're voting with, but I can't see. Are you not voting?
Madam Mayor, no, I'm not voting. I'll be abstaining from all votes on this recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Can you make sure that when you do vote, I can see your hand? Because you'll be able to see on the screen, thank you. Thank you, I think. Are you okay with that, Town Clerk?
Sorry, yes, yes, Madam Mayor. And now we move then to the new substantive motion which incorporates both previous amendments.
Right, thank you. Has that been seconded, Town Clerk?
I think councillor Parker either is or is asking to speak.
Right, councillor Parker?
Yes, can I suggest, and I don't know how you handle this. I was, I was just looking up when councillor Ward suggested that we strengthen our recommendation C, that the strengthening might be best done as a reference to NPPF Section 16, which deals with significant harm to monuments.
Thank you. Does that need to go as a further amendment, Town Clerk?
I think if the proposer of the amendment is happy with that as being part of the framing of his amendment and if no one else has an objection, that is agreeable. But it'll be a matter for the proposer councillor Ward as to whether it should be framed in that.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'm happy for that to be added.
Thank you. Right, now we go to the substantive motion. Which has been proposed and seconded. Thank you, councillor Hutton. Right. Any further debate on the substantive motion? No? Right, can we please now vote? Those in favour, please show.
That appears to be clearly carried, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you, councillor Ward.
There is one more recommendation, Madam Mayor. And that is the overall recommendation that the views of the town council as listed in Appendix B be passed to the local planning authority for consideration.
Thank you. I will second that. Any further debate on that? Those in favour, please show.
Again, carry on.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, can I just give thanks to the assistant to the Town Clerk for producing these minutes? The meeting of this committee concluded at something like seven o'clock yesterday evening and I received the minutes in the middle of the afternoon. So a thank you to the ATTC for producing them in such a timely fashion.
Indeed, thank you very much, councillor Ward, and thank you very much, Mrs Smallorum. We now move to items circulated for information only. Item eight, service reports to receive for information, the following service reports. General manager, Mr Southall. Anybody? Nothing further to add? Anybody have any comments or questions to Mr Southall? Can we note your report with thanks then? Next, we move on to the Town Hall, Butchers Hall and Works Departments report. Any comments, questions? To that?
Can we note that report?
Thank you, councillor Smith. Then we then move on to the Panier Markets Report from Mr Carruthers. Pleased to see that Mr Carruthers is currently undertaking his Diploma in Market Administration that covers communication, the law and practical operations and is specific to markets. That looks very interesting and I wish him well with his studies there. Can we note that one? Any comments, questions? No, thank you. Move on then to item nine, Finance and Other Matters. To receive for information, the following report of the assistant to the Town Clerk. Thank Mrs Smallorum for this report. Any comments or questions? Councillor Mrs Mann, please.
I just noted that the date of the Civic Ball was still in there for September and I wasn't sure if that was really the case. So I just, I thought we'd sort of said what was maybe not going to happen at all.
I think it is probably going to happen and that's the date for this year's Civic Ball as proposed at the moment. Okay. Councillor Mrs Ewing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you just clarify if the Civic Ball is for your previous mayoral years or is it for councillor Hutton?
It's for my two years that I've missed and the next year's mayor will probably be the ball is usually in April, March or April, isn't it?
March, April, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments or questions? No, can we note that report? Thank you. Now move on to nine B, Town Hall and Markets Consultative Group. Notes from the meeting held on the 24th of February. The next meeting of that group will be on the 23rd of March. Mr Southall, did you wish to make any comments about this?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Squire.
I should add that this extra meeting had been convened, which facilitated the good rapport between our officers and the traders. And that extra meeting was well attended and it's an officers-led meeting, which I think facilitates a good harmony between traders and the council. So gratitude to said officers.
Thank you. Yes, it's always an interesting meeting, well attended. Councillor Smith.
I mean, this is connected, I suppose, with that committee and with bid. Where are we with organising the opening of the town? On the 12th of April.
Mr Southall, would you like to comment on that, being our health and safety person, expert?
We have a meeting arranged on Thursday with numerous stakeholders, so West Devon Borough Council. We have a meeting arranged on Thursday with numerous stakeholders, so West Devon Borough Council, TTC, bid, et cetera, to discuss around the comm side and other aspects around the town centre reopening. Meetings have already been held between stakeholders in relation to the grant money that's been available to support the reopening of the town centre around improved signage, et cetera. And we also recently had a meeting which related to areas that could be used for outside seating and also potential areas around widening the pavements, et cetera. Certain views discussed between different partners and different stakeholders, which have been going to be taken back to their respective bodies. I think from the town council's perspective, we've got a clear vision of what we want to achieve for our specific areas, which is set out, to be honest, in in the managers' reports and in the consultative group minutes. And obviously, we will continue to work with the rest of the partners to ensure as best we can a smooth opening of the town centre.
Thank you, Mr Southall. Any other comments or questions on this report? Councillor Williamson, is that you asking to speak?
Yes, concurrent with this meeting, a bid bod meeting is starting at 5.30 on this medium that we're using now. I'm trying to log into that meeting because they are discussing what was referred to by the general manager as a stakeholders' meeting regarding town reopening. So I'm juggling two meetings here, I can get into that, no, I can't get in. So I'll have to update after this by email.
Thank you. Any further comments? Right, can we note those minutes then, please, or those notes of the consultative group? Item nine C, county councillors' report, which has been enclosed. Councillor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And with your indulgence, I'd like to just refer to one passage of the county councillors' report, and some of you won't be surprised to know that it relates to education. The the content of the county councillors' report refers to a report by Mr Niles of Devon County Council that was made available to all West Devon Borough councillors, but not yet to Tavistock town councillors. I'm challenging two of two important figures. And I just like to let the members of the town council know that I'm doing that and why. There's been an ongoing correspondence between me and Mr Niles, and I think there are two assumptions or two figures that just need to be borne in mind. Number one is, the report and Mr Niles has said that the, there we go, sorry, I'm on page two. I think of the, yeah, that the, the 296 pupils that will be generated by the development in the in Tavistock. That figure isn't quite right. What what Mr Niles has done is taken some of the figures from the planning permissions and some of the figures from the local plan. The local plan contains an allocation of 600 houses for the Carrington Road development, but the planning permission is for up to 750. Now, so that figure of 296 pupils that we can expect is actually closer to 340, it's 380, 338. So that figure is too low. The second figure is the 163 primary school places that developer contributions have been secured for. Two things wrong with that statement, one is that the developer contributions have been secured for a new primary school, not for 163 primary school places. The the only thing that can be used for is a new primary school. But the 163 seems to be a miss, a mathematical error on somebody's part. The two, they say that they've got 2.4 million pounds raised, and I agree with that. They're, and the education infrastructure plan says that each pupil place costs 19,417 pounds. Divide one by the other, and actually, you haven't got 163 places in the fund, you've only got 123. So that figure is 40 down, and the other figure is 40 up. The end result is, as councillor Hutton has said in some of his correspondence recently, that there appears to be no provision for some 123 pupils, even when all of the vacancies are currently taken up. So I just thought I'd point that out to any members who were intending to use those figures at the forthcoming meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Hutton?
I think it's important that we respond to the letter we got from the Town Clerk this morning, saying that when this meeting on the 22nd, they would, they would like us to put questions that we want to raise before the meeting. And I think that's very important, because the question I'm going to ask is this question of if there is not enough schoolchildren around for the building of a new school, because it would appear the council say there is not enough number of primary school pupils needing a school. So there will not be money for a new school. We want to know, for the people of Tavistock, want to know what will happen to the schoolchildren who do appear, who are going to increase the numbers, but at present, there is no provision for a school. So I'm going to ask that question, and I would encourage other members to ask questions so the Devon County, when they have their meeting, know what's concerning us. It's not ambushing them, it's giving them notice that these are things we are interested in, want to know.
Thank you councillor Parker.
My apologies, Madam Mayor, I meant to raise this as well. I understand from what happened at the West Devon meeting and from the Town Clerk, that it's possible that there may be a Devon County officer there who's able to deal with the 89 bus issue. And there are also likely to be officers from West Devon Borough Council who'll be able to answer general questions about section 106 and what's legal and what isn't.
Thank you. Right, any other further comments on this county councillor report? Can we therefore note councillor Smith?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask a question, halfway down on page one, there's an indication that they have a hundred thousand pounds for enhancement to street furniture to be made available to towns and parishes. You have to bid for the work, which is, it says cyclical maintenance. I wonder whether the town council will be putting in a bid for this? I have interest because over the last few weeks, I've had a number of people saying that things like benches and other areas of the town are starting to look rather tatty and become unusual. Whether they are covered by this, I don't know, but I'm just asking the question.
Can I ask the general manager for a comment on this, please?
I'm sure we could ask a question to see whether we are eligible to actually draw down any money. Obviously, historically, we used to look after TTC stock of benches and also the ones which are under the West Devon Borough Council portfolio. That changed about two years ago, where West Devon Borough Council took that, that element back in house. So there's a, there's a different split here, obviously, the ones which the town council look after, which relate to our specific areas and also Bedford Square, round the meadows, which shuts down, et cetera. Then all the other ones around the town centre and the side streets, et cetera, which are in the ownership and responsibility of West Devon Borough Council. But I'm sure I can also speak to West Devon Borough Council officers and signpost them as well around the potential for for drawdown of monies.
Thank you, Wayne, I am aware, it does say that the, they will be looking for a fit, a match funding by the bidder. So I'm aware that we don't have vast amounts of money to spend on this, but it's worth looking at, thank you.
Thank you, if you think that that hundred thousand is for the whole of Devon, it's not a huge part of money, is it? Because Devon's a massive, great county. Councillor Mrs Ewing, did you wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I was just going to say, do we have cost code for things like looking after the benches and street furniture? Mister General Manager?
No, come under the property maintenance budget.
Thank you.
Right, any further comments or questions, or are we ready to move on? Okay, so we move on now to the Tavistock bid company minutes of the meeting held on the 2nd of December and the 21st of January. Any comments or questions councillor Williamson, I think you were at both meetings, did you wish to comment on them? You're on mute councillor Williamson.
I thought the spacebar worked, but it didn't. No, I haven't got any comments, this concurrent meeting of bid bod to discuss reopening, that's essentially where bid is now, along with the the proposal document for bid number three, which is being finalised at this meeting tonight and be released in the next 24 hours. I'm afraid I haven't been able to contribute to that. And I know that, as I referenced in my previous comment, that the general manager has been dealing with the the health and safety issues with reopening, and that is really the the current hot topic for the bid, those two things.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody have any comments or questions on the bid minutes, the two sets of bid minutes? No, I can't see any on screen, thank you very much. Right, now move on to item E, which is a project update to receive any additional oral update in connection with the Tavistock Townscape Heritage Initiative scheme or the Guildway, Guildhall Gateway Centre project. Town Clerk, please, do you have anything?
Only one, and that's in relation to the THI scheme, and that's to say that the public realm completion has been delayed by weather conditions. Unfortunately, the laying of the, both the resin bonded finish and also the completion of some of the granite paviers is impacted potentially both by wet weather conditions and by cold weather conditions. And recently, we've had, we've had both, so there is a delay in relation to that, but we are still scheduling to complete that project by the end of March. And I don't have any further update to that, which was given a budget and policy in relation to the meeting, or, sorry, in relation to the Guildhall. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Ewings.
May I just ask, and I had to word this delicately, because as you know, I'm usually quite blunt. The large beach balls that are in the car park, what are they for? And they look like they're made of concrete. Are they to stop people going over into your granite resin when it's, Mister General Manager? Or are they there just to chip all the cars?
I think it's the same answer I gave you previously, which relates to the fact that the the actual bollards themselves are in place to, primarily for public safety. So obviously, you've got an area at the moment, which is a granite piazza, where potentially people would be able to drive on that space. You've got a pathway which is leading along the war memorial section, which could easily be driven on to, you've got the cobbled area where you've got seating, et cetera, which could be driven on to. We have ongoing problems with that on Bedford Square. So the bollards themselves are for public safety, and that's the main reason behind it. And what I would say to everybody is let's judge a scheme on completion as opposed to looking at the bollards and the finish, where a number of people have commented on how they look at the moment set against the the black tarmac. And obviously, the black tarmac is not the the finished product, because we still need to have the resin go on there. And hopefully, we'll be in a position where the whole landscaping blends in appropriately itself. If that makes sense.
Thank you.
I'm going to be convinced.
I'd raised questions about them this week with the general manager. Any further questions about the THI or the Gateway Centre project? Councillor Smith, please.
I just wanted to to ask, get my own reassurance, see, these are the bollards as specified by the architect design principle that we went forward with.
Absolutely. The answer is yes, yeah, that's been approved for planning.
I think you're sorry. Sorry councillor Squire, I didn't catch that.
I think they're very, very good, they're, they're, they actually do attract interest. I've had many comments and questions about them, and I think they are an architectural addition. One which does raise questions, but one which can be answered as well, thank you.
Councillor Ellis, please.
I'd just like to reassure the general manager that I think they look excellent and a real feature of the car park. And maybe we could invite Eddie Hall, former world's strongest man, to come down to help us open, because he was handy with a napstone as well.
It's an interesting idea, okay, councillor Benning, please.
Yeah, I'm pulling favour of living those bollards, granite slab there, because it's far better than having a chain link, chain link fence around the area. It does look a bit modern, but I'm pulling in favour of them, I think they set the place off a lot better than a chain link fence.
Okay, thank you. Right, so then we now move on to F, little one. Any update from or questions to council representatives serving on other outside bodies in connection with the work of those bodies? If I can start off, King's House currently closed, but we're looking to gradually return and reopen when the situation allows us to. The government support we've had has been a lifeline to us, it really has, we've been well supported by the government support, which has been paid to us by West Devon Borough Council, that along with furlough, has allowed us to keep our heads well above water, so much so that we've engaged in a new project during closed down, and we have refurbished the ground floor toilets, which I'm told are now looking absolutely lovely, which is good news. And I've yet to be in the building, but I will be soon. I don't know if councillor Mrs Mann has been in there with the scrap store yet, but probably not. So that's from there, I think, any other updates, please? Councillor Mrs Ewing?
Just an update on the Tavistock Community Football Club, because football will hopefully be starting very soon, so we won't see as much as councillor Lewis. And to say that the work that's been going on down there, primarily led by councillor Lewis, I have to say, who has done an excellent job working. And while I'm singing his praises, I think we all need to say a huge thank you to Alan for all the work he has done on cleaning street signs that is a Devon County job. He has done absolutely amazing, amazing work, well done Al. But the football club, the pitches are all ready, they're looking beautiful, and we're pretty much all ready to go, aren't we Alan? Oh, hang on, I've got to think about.
Yeah, sorry, thank you, yes, they look fantastic. The police have been really good, thanks to the mayor, chasing them up a little bit, but they've been fantastic. They've been popping in and out, keeping an eye on things, you know. At the end of the day, if a couple of kids are down there having a kick around with the ball, they're not hurting anything. And with what they've had to deal with in this pandemic, in this pandemic and the lockdowns, it's only fair that, that, you know, we let them play. Obviously, only in in groups of two. Um, but obviously, only in uh in in groups of two. Um, but we hope to start on the, we get a an update from the FA later this week. We hope to start football training after the twenty ninth, and some leagues will continue, some of the grassroots leagues will continue. So fingers crossed. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't understand the comments in the newspaper, the cleaning of signs, how Devon County aren't allowed to do it because of Covid regulations. I I couldn't really understand what that was all about, but it's not for me to uh question that. Hey, any further updates from members on groups they belong to? Councillor Mrs Mann, please, then councillor Squire.
Sorry, I just wanted to um give an update. It's not, I'm not really on this body, but I did raise the Slow Ways Initiative, and I wanted to say that I'd had um uh emails back from the Tavistock Ramblers. Christine Yudes has registered with Slow Ways and is um waiting for them to get back to her with uh additional materials. And I'd also heard back from Slow Ways itself to say thank you very much, and that they are happy to create some promotion materials for social media, for our council specifically, and to mention us within their literature, so um people know that we're supporting it, um which might be helpful for um tourism and things like that. So I was going to pass that on to the officers, but just to give a brief update on that.
Thank you, councillor Mrs Mann. Uh councillor Squire, were you next?
Yeah, um West Devon Safe Havens are ho- hosting three families, one of which is actually hosted by the council itself. One of those families moves out this week, so Tavistock will be down to two Syrian families. We still will be the landlords of one of those families. There are two other families in Oakhampton, so four families in West Devon altogether.
Thank you, councillor Squire. Uh councillor Barry Smith?
Um, just a word, in the Tavvy Times on this Thursday, when it comes out, there will be an article in there, um which is talking about Lyons Group. I chaired the meeting last night. And we are looking at doing something in, on the weekend of the seventeenth and eighteenth of July, which is the traditional carnival weekend, which won't happen this year. Uh but it will possibly run some form of parade um events and other things going around. And we will be looking at doing something in the meadows, provided it meets with everyone's approval, on one of those days. We'll probably do the parade on Saturday, sorry, on Sunday, because that's when everybody is, or the most people are closed. Um and do something in the meadows on Sunday, but it's going to be a celebration. And the uh figure that's, or the name that's been pencilled in is over the rainbow. But there will, there will be more details in the uh in the the Tavvy Times. It's linked in with bid as well. Um, they picked up on it, and that's something we're trying to work on to promote the town and make people have a bit of fun. That's the only thing.
Okay, thank you. Right, any further updates? Right, thank you. Um the uh county council report from councillor Moody was only received this afternoon. Um but it has been circulated to all members, I think, so thank you for that.
Madam Mayor, there's two um people with their hand up.
Sorry. Councillor Crawford, councillor Moody?
Thank you. Um I just wanted to uh say that uh it wasn't adult training or anything, but I did attend webinars uh with the Devon Carbon, interim carbon plan, uh and I circulated some information about those to uh ma- majority of councillors. Um but just to sort of suggest that people actually look at the uh Devon Carbon Plan. Most of the councils in the area are signed up to them, as well as things like the Environmental Agency, South West Water. So it's, there's quite a collaboration in terms of looking at what can be done and how we can achieve net zero carbon by twenty fifteen, if not before, because the aim is to do it before. So uh I'd just say, have a look, please, if you can. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Moody next?
Thank, thank you, um Madam Mayor. I, yes, I must uh get, send my apologies to all members on the town council for I had a um, an inbox malfunction. Um, in other words, my, the email request for my report was buried in my in tray, and I'm, I do apologize, it only, it only popped up uh earlier than today. But I've, I've sent the uh a brief outline of of some West Devon related items for car parking, council tax, business grants, and the audiovisual grant from West Devon. The one thing I'd just like to say, and I, and if anybody has any queries, they can, they can contact me. Um, the other thing I was going to say is that uh I would like to thank the West Devon officers for working extremely hard, um not only doing their their day to day business, but also dealing with the business grants. Uh it is taking a lot of man hours. And uh I think today we did a payment, uh between South Ham and West Devon, we did a payment run of seven million pounds. So uh there's a lot of grants, and what we're trying to do is to make the business grants uh easier uh to apply for uh using the government restrictions. Um and also the other point to to raise was the uh licence refunds um for local businesses, people like taxi licences and pubs, they're getting a refund of their their licence fee. Okay, but apologies for the late um response.
Thank you. Uh councillor Moody, can I ask one question? Uh in Devon, there were discretionary grants for charities, are they happening now?
I'm not, I I can, I I can, I I don't know the, all the ins and outs of this, it's quite a complex um situation. I can't find out about what, it it's all, it's all to do with central government direction. Um and uh so we are controlled by what the central government uh are saying what the money is for. I can find out and get back to you.
If you can, because I know two choices that I'm involved with would be. Right, councillor Parker, then councillor Mrs Mann, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh I I I think we, as Tavistock Town Council, as well as the Tavistock Heritage Trust, owe West Devon Borough Council a vote of thanks, real thanks. Uh, the thirty thousand pounds grant from West Devon Borough Council, it 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 sounds easy when you say it like that, but I know uh that the town clerk uh started this off with a, I thought a very good uh application for money for uh from the section one oh six community fund. Unfortunately, the uh that that fund wasn't available to uh to make that grant, but the application impressed the chief executive of West Devon Borough Council and councillor Dury. That uh he, he consulted all about Tavistock Town Councils, I mean all of them. Uh I I had contacts from Steve Hipsey, Andy Cools, Mandy Ewing, Adam Bridgewater, and the, the one with the moustache at the bottom of my screen there. Uh and uh I know all of them put their shoulder to the wheel, and they found money that frankly, I don't think they knew existed. Uh they trawled the budgets and they made a real effort uh that this uh that they they accepted that this project is so important to the future of Tavistock that they, they really pulled the stops out for this. And I think as a town council, I would like to uh pass on a vote of real thanks to all of our Tavistock members and to West Devon Borough Council and to the town clerk.
Indeed, thank you, yes.
Thank you very much, Graham. I I will forward that on to uh to my colleagues at West Devon. Uh uh can I just, just in finishing, there's one, I don't wish to to end on a, on a, on a downer, but but your remark, um um Madam Mayor, about the toilets in the in the um Kingdom House, we've had problems with the toilets in the um Bedford Car Park. Someone set fire to uh one of the bins in the disabled toilet last night. Um and uh it has now been shut and has to be re- uh refurbished. But I'm sorry to give you bad news, but I I had hoped that, I'm I'm going, just thinking of talking to the Wolf and the library to see whether there's any CCTV footage last night of groups of people wandering past. Um I know we don't have any CCTV in the the toilet itself. But uh at this particular point in time, we just don't need vandalism like this. Uh we can all blame, we can all blame Co- Covid and people being bored and and frustrated and and all the rest of it, but it's just adding to the cost of the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh councillor Mrs Mann, next, please.
Um, yeah, that's terrible news. Uh sorry, I was going back to a question about them charities and West Devon Borough Council, and I can confirm that I was able to work with the trustees of the scrap store to apply for discretionary um grant for a charity. So um I would encourage other charities that uh need that assistance to um ask West Devon Borough about it.
Okay, I was, a a local charity that we have connections with here uh lost a huge amount of income. They rely, they're, they fund their whole process about eighteen, twenty thousand pound at least a year on um fundraising, and they've not been able to do any of that, so they really do need some help. So thank you for that, councillor Mrs Mann. Um, okay, right. Uh, I'd, anything else on item nine? Move on to item ten, then. Receive such communications or reports as may be submitted by the town mayor. I have two items this evening. First, remind members the, about the twenty second of March briefing. I'm going to encourage everybody, all members to attend that meeting, please, and to submit questions prior to that. And questions have to be in, is it this Friday, town clerk?
Now you're asking, Madam Mayor.
Oh, right, sorry.
I I can't, I can't remember which it was. It is in the email. And what we will do, just so the colleagues are aware, is if there are some which look as if there's overlap, um is the, the mayor, the deputy mayor and the immediate past mayor will just be asked to, to do some sort of um moderation to make sure that we aren't asking the same question in six different ways.
Okay, thank you. That sounds a good plan. And the second one is, um I've been in close contact with Western Power, spoken to their manager for Tavistock uh because of the poor record in the last two weeks of power cuts. He told me uh this morning that these were both high voltage cable faults. One is an old Launston Road and the other was at Redmore Close. Uh whenever there's a power cut or a power outage, um Western Power are fined in the region of seventy thousand pounds for each occasion. So it's something that they don't want to be happening. They're working um very hard uh to make sure this doesn't happen again. And um it said to quite a number of their staff live in Tavistock, so they have a a personal interest in it. Um if anybody knows anybody who's particularly vulnerable, um that they should register with their power supplier as priority, needing priority. And then um Western Power will pick that up and actually be able to help them if and when there are further power cuts. Okay. Right, thank you. Right, so um item eleven, urgent matters brought forward at the discretion of the town mayor, I have none. So we close the public part of the meeting, take a ten minute um break and be back at six fifteen, please.